Call to order, regularly scheduled meeting of the El Segundo City Council, October 2nd. And Clerk's Office, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nico?
Here.
Councilmember Pimental?
Here.
Councilmember Brand?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Percy?
Here.
Mayor Boyes?
Here. All right, next we're gonna go right into the invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor George Lopez of the Bridge Church. Thank you for being here, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Dr. Don Brand. So please rise.
Lord, we thank you for this meeting. Lord, we pray your blessing upon it, pray for these civil servants and their family, Lord. We lift up our policemen and our fire department, Lord. I pray that tonight, Lord, we would be just free to speak, Lord God, that truth would prevail in this place, Lord. We ask your blessing upon it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor Lopez and thank you Dr. Brand. All right, we have a couple presentations for the evening and we're gonna start with a presentation from the Police Department to introduce the new HR analyst, Chief Police, looking mighty dapper this evening.
He does.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, Mayor and Council, good evening. And, excuse me, it's my pleasure to introduce to you two of our newest employees. One's a contract employee and one's a regular employee with us here at El Segundo. And, you know, I often talk in this forum, we talk a lot about sworn police officers, and that's obviously very relevant, very appropriate, but we can't forget about the professional staff and how critically important they are to our overall mission. And to my immediate right is Marilyn Dyson. She's our new contract HR analyst. And obviously recruitment retention is a tremendous challenge for us. And through analysis of this, one of the big problems we have is with, just with the pipeline, just with trying to make that as efficient as we possibly can. And so that's why we've got Marilyn on board, who has extensive experience with HR. But interestingly enough, she actually has her master's degree in clinical psychology. So she does bring that human behavior aspect to it, which I think is gonna be very helpful with us as we really do that deep dive on our processes and where we can improve and other things we can do. Because we got a lot of people in on the front end and we struggle to get them out the back end. And so one of the tasks that Marilyn's gonna be doing is really looking at the granular level as to how we process applicants and maybe make recommendations as to what we can do moving forward. Next to Marilyn, Alejandro Rivera, Police Assistant, and she is in our Records Division. And really, records is what makes the Police Department hum. You know, if it was an army and it's their transportation, that's our Records Division for us, and it's a critically important position. And especially now as we undergo a new CAD RMS system, Mark 43, it's a time right now where we're automating. But to try to take our vintage 20, 30 years ago stuff and move it into that automation is just a ton of work that's going on. So she's been hitting the ground running. She has her BS degree from Cal State Long Beach in Criminal Justice. And Alejandro likes to run. She actually runs half marathon. So I'd like to figure out a way to get her on the Baker Vegas team, but we'll see how that goes. So that's our two most recent additions, so.
Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause and a welcome. Now Chief, did you say that Marilyn has a degree in political psychology or clinical psychology? I could've sworn. I'm sure it was my mind going elsewhere. I'm like, I think she's evaluating all of us up there in the diocese as we're sitting here, but...
That would've been a Freudian slip if I said political psychology.
No, I'm sure it was me. Okay, shall we join up for a photo op? Should we do that? You okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you for that, Chief. Next up, we have a proclamation. And Dr. Don Brand's gonna read the proclamation. Accepting the Fire Prevention Week proclamation is Fire Chief Chris Donovan. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. The proclamation goes like this. Whereas fire departments in the United States responded to an estimated 352,500 home fires in 2016, according to the latest research from the National Fire Protection Association. And whereas home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association, whereas the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to US fire departments was 10% higher in 2016 than in 1980. And whereas residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household and practiced at least twice a year to ensure everyone know what to do in a real fire situation. And whereas the El Segundo Fire Department, which is dedicated to the safety of life and property from the devastating effects of fires and other emergencies, is joined by concerned citizens of our community, as well as businesses, the school districts, service clubs, and other organizations in its fire safety efforts. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, in commemoration of the great fire of 1871, which killed 250 persons, left 100,000 homeless, and destroyed more than 17,400 buildings. And in order to raise the awareness in the community of the importance of practicing fire protection and fire safety to avoid needless loss of property and life, do hereby proclaim the week of October 7 through October 13, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week. Further, the mayor and members of the council join Fire Chief Christopher Donovan in inviting the El Segundo community to observe Fire Prevention Week by practicing fire prevention and fire safety year-round and heeding the message, look, listen, learn, be aware, fire can happen anywhere. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Chief. Did you wanna say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Brand. A lengthy proclamation, but certainly important. Fire Prevention Week is an important week for the fire department. You know, the reality is, we have the best equipment, we have outstanding training, we have just installed a new fire station alerting system that gets us out of the fire station in record time now. And ultimately, what it boils down to is how families and businesses take care of themselves. Working smoke detectors is critically important. Making sure that you test the batteries every two year, or excuse me, every six months to make sure you have a working battery. Practicing escape routes with your kids and loved ones in the home is important. And just general safety practices throughout the home is critically important. We're equipped and ready to respond, but our hope is that the community will be fire safe and heed these warnings. And we appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that. And do you wanna present the proclamation? And, yeah, thank you, Dr. Brand.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Dr. Brand. All right, next up, we have a presentation, and it's related to Chevron. And this is regarding the refinery catalyst dust release. And I think Mr. Spackman, Rod Spackman, is here from Chevron to represent.
Good evening, Mayor. Well, members of council. My name's Rod Spackman. I'm the manager of Government Public Affairs for Chevron here in the LA Basin. I'm gonna spend just a few minutes kinda giving you a little update on the sequence of events as they occurred on the week of the 17th. Try and give you a good sense of what we know today in terms of some of the issues that have obviously continued to linger in terms of making sure that we respond to all the concerns that were generated during that period of time. I wanna start off by making just two general comments, however. The first is to say how much we appreciate the collaborative efforts of the fire department, the El Segundo Fire Department, in trying to sort through the details of this incident, making sure that proper notifications were made, addressing potential concerns with regard to the community, and really making sure that we all were in the appropriate place in terms of the character and conduct of our response and everything that went with that. The other part of it is, I will say that we hope, at least in some measure, that notwithstanding the fact that this was a difficult circumstance and clearly one that we apologize for, and one that we certainly are personally frustrated by, given our history and expectations of the community with regard to our operations, that as we look back on this, we'll learn, we'll improve, and we'll find opportunities to continue to ensure that our operations meet the expectations of the community. So let me talk just a little bit about the sequence. On Monday the 17th, at about 7:42 AM, we lost power internally to a major process unit. It's called our FCC. It's a fluid catalytic cracker. And it is a unit that, principal goal in life is to produce gasoline. It's the single largest gasoline-producing unit in the refinery. And it does this through an atmosphere, a reaction that occurs at atmospheric pressure, using a very fine catalyst material to where it reacts with the molecules, breaks them into a shorter chain, as they call it, from a longer chain molecule, stabilizes that with some hydrogen, and you go from a heavier oil material to basically gasoline. And that's the basic frame of what this particular process does. Having, and we energize our systems through a variety of substations that draw power off of a larger grid that we're supplied by through Southern California Edison. So having lost power at a substation that feeds this particular unit, we have a variety of safety instrumented systems that by their design will put the unit in the safe park. Once it sees, particularly sees what it considers to be a significant activity where you've lost power, it is by an established set of protocols designed to automatically begin to shut down this unit and put it in the safe park. The goal is to ensure that you don't destroy the unit or create some kind of catastrophic failure that would be significantly more damaging, not only to the facility, obviously, but to the community at large. The consequence of that, though, is you have to depressur all of the equipment. And so when you lose your electrostatic precipitator, your main air blower, your wet gas compressor, and all of your cooling systems within the unit, all of them linked to the fact that power is now not available, this process takes over somewhat automatically. And we call these in the industry, safety instrumented systems. And we actually installed a number of new ones during a turnaround, a major turnaround that we had earlier this year. So we're getting used to them, if you will, in the context of what their design and expectations are. So this, at about, again, at about that timeframe that I described, at 7:42 AM, we had that, we had this loss of power. The system went into safe park and we depressurized all the process gas that was in the unit out through our safety flare. It was, to say the least, an obvious impact to the community, to the neighborhood, to the South Bay frankly, because it was visible for quite some distance. It was an interesting set of atmospheric conditions. There wasn't a lot of mixing of the material and dissipation of the smoke, as you would otherwise see. But it was a heavy flaring event and one that you would not typically see, except for the complete loss of power to a process unit. Subsequent to that, there were two other issues that, if you will, precipitated out of the original shutdown of the FCC. One of the things in an FCC that you try not to do is to lose circulation. Even if you have to shut down the unit, once you've determined the potential problem, if you can rectify that and slow cycle the unit in some way, not put feed in, not do anything in the process side, but just allow the material, the catalyst, to circulate, it's important, because otherwise the catalyst will set up and it becomes something, not really a cement, but something that's not all that dissimilar to a cement and has to get mined out of the unit. So on Tuesday, we were trying to just slow cycle the main air blower, because we did identify the area of the problem in a substation that delivers power to this particular process unit. And we had two events. One in the very, we had an event on the 17th, excuse me, on the 18th, excuse me, that was in the early hours of the morning. It impacted a portion of El Segundo on the west side and also, well, the El Porto region of Manhattan Beach. And that was a catalyst relief, this catalyst release. And this is, this material's a very fine, white material inconsistency. Its principal construct is some amorphous silica, which is, again, like a sand, some materials, binding materials, which are typically clay materials, and then a small amount of metal oxides typically, some kind of reactive agent. In this case, it can be a range of things. In this case, I believe it might've been aluminum oxide. So that material was released. It impacted, mostly physically impacted property. And you know, I think you know the details of our response subsequent to that. We marshaled about 100 people from the facility and got them out into the community, leaving flyers, asking people to either contact us if they had either issues with cars or other personal property, try and respond appropriately. We worked to contact the schools, other potentially impacted areas, and again, worked very closely with the fire department on the NICSAL alerts and other information that was provided to the public. The second event, and a more consequential event in terms of the, I think, the size, was our attempt to restart the unit on Thursday, the 18th. And FCCs are delicate systems in one sense of the word. You have to be very careful that you do not allow processed gas, or when you introduce feed, have hydrocarbons that could back their way into what's called the electrostatic precipitator. And I won't bore you with the details, but some of you'll remember that when ExxonMobil operated their facility in Torrance before it was sold, they blew the back end off of an ESP. So that's another reason why we've installed incremental safety systems in our plant, is that we want to ensure that under no circumstance can any hydrocarbon back its way through our system and go into an electrostatic precipitator, which is a charged environment where we're collecting the used catalyst and recycling it. And it literally is, as it sounds, it has an electrical charge on plates and that material collects on the plates. And as such, it's then, we can collect it off and then recycle it into the process directly, all in a closed system. So these systems that we're designed to do, are designed to ensure that we have some protection. And we have a series of new monitors that monitor for things like CO, which is a precursor in our system, is to look for potential for a hydrocarbon to be moving through the system incorrectly. We tripped that system as a result of putting the main air blower back in service and raising the operating activity of that blower. All the details of that are still being reviewed, but clearly we had a circumstance where either the system itself was overwhelmed by the amount of material that was flowing by the analyzer at the time, or there was some water in the system that may have caused the analyzer to incorrectly read what was going on. But in any event, it did what it's supposed to do. It shut down the ESP to ensure that there would be no significant explosion or other event. The problem was that we then released a significant volume of catalyst out in the community. And that was the real impact that you saw at about 10:30 in the morning. It ran from about 10:20 to 11:47 that day on Thursday, the 18th. And it's really the event that we've been most recently working to rectify with all of our neighbors. Lot of contact with both the businesses along that northwest corridor of the community, as well as the residential population as well. Those are the events. I'm happy to answer all, obviously, more specific questions about what we know and where we're headed. There's a lot of investigatory work. I think the fire chief can describe for you some of what we do in this kind of space. No stone goes unturned in a circumstance like this. We certainly understand that we had a power loss that was in a substation. We think we have a good sense of what the circumstances are that may have led to that. That'll be published, that'll be published in an appropriate report to the agencies. From that, they'll be, we will take our own corrective actions, and there may be others that are required of us. But we never, we never leave a report unutilized in terms of improving our operations. So that process is ongoing. Certainly, the agents... Certainly, the agencies will continue to investigate the event. We have already received a nuisance violation from the AQMD for the actual flaring event itself, which, again, given the size and scale, I wouldn't say is surprising in any way. But there's more opportunity there, and we'll see how the agencies want to work forward on addressing these issues.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Spackman. Any questions?
I was out of town on the seventeenth in Sacramento, but I want to put this in perspective for everyone. We have the safest refinery here in El Segundo with a great track record, and these kinds of things can happen. The new Da Vinci High Schools have been open about 11 months. We took some smoke over there this time, but this is the first time anything like that has reached us in the last 11 months. So these things happen. The first day I was superintendent of Wiseburn, we had a shelter-in-place drill that Chevron led us through, and so they've been very aware of the Wiseburn Schools, which were there 10 or 12 years before Standard Oil came here. So I just want to be sure that the Da Vinci Schools are on the list of places to notify, because there's three small high schools there, and they're somewhat downwind from the refinery. But just a great track record for this refinery. We're just really fortunate to have such responsible people leading the refinery here, and I think these incidents will be minimized and few and far between going forward like they have been in the past. Thank you.
Can I just make one general comment? There was a couple of things that your brief comments reminded me. School notifications is an issue that, out of this process, I want to make sure we understand better. We think we did a good job, but we did that because the fire department did a good job in that process. I think the schools took the appropriate protective actions, as you would expect them to, didn't have kids out doing anything that would be otherwise potentially hazardous to their health relative to the timeframe that the issues were ongoing. But it's an area that the new care organization that the city belongs to, I hope that in the weeks ahead, we look at how we do those notifications, whether or not there are improvements that could help in that regard, because I do think it was one area, as I listened to the many calls that I directly took and responded to, and I've responded to it quite a number personally. It's an area that I understand the community is very sensitive to. It's an area that I want to make sure that we're doing our job with regard to providing the information as quickly and as reasonably as we can, because there's nothing more important than the health and well-being of our young people. And so there's an, again, the care organization's been reestablished to help educate, hopefully improve that notification process a little bit, provide new opportunities to do that. But thank you. That's an area where I do think, at least my personal interplay with a lot of residents during the week of the seventeenth led me to believe there's an opportunity.
I have a question for you, Rod. Maybe you can put it into perspective for just our community. As Dr. Brand said, you are the safest refinery, I think, in the United States. I faintly remember seeing a poster board in your main lobby that stated that. A flaring event such as this, how often do these types of events happen at all the other refineries across the United States?
I can provide, through the city manager, some data on our relative performance as a facility compared to all of our competitors in the basin. And if you look at our overall track record over the past, say, four or five years, take an appropriate cycle, you would find that we're either number one or two in terms of our relative performance, the lowest source of flare emissions from our facility, the use of our safety flare systems of any of our competitors, by a significant margin in most cases. The closest to us in that, and there's a process by which this is all measured. It's done by the air district. It's not done by us, so it's not us trying to shape data, if you will. But the closest other good-performing facility is the previous BP or Andeavor facility, or now, as of a few days ago, Marathon Facility in Carson. But I'm happy to provide you some data that goes back over a period of time, and it'll show our relative performance, and it's a measure of the total number of flare events against the standard applied by the district. And we've been very good.
Thank you.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
One is, I'm curious, I know I already asked the city about our response and notification time, and I'll have some questions for us internally on that. The safety flare, was the safety flare at 7:42, or did the power go out at 7:42?
They're all sequentially, they're almost right on top of one another. There's probably a short lag of time, say, a couple of minutes, but from the time you lose power, you immediately, you're going to over-pressure your, what they call your PRDs, your pressure relief devices, and that, so the gas that's inside the process unit gets vented into a closed system that goes to the safety flare. And that's going to happen almost immediately once you lose power, because basically, again, you've flipped the switch on the entire unit and you've shut it down. And so that gas has to be, that depressuring event occurs very quickly after the actual loss of power.
Got it. Thank you. And then are there considerations for, I don't know how much power is required for something like this when your service provider goes down, but do you have generators or backup contingency plans for that?
There's a lot of conversation, or has been in this space historically, as to what can, can you really, can you really provide what we typically would call backup power, some kind of, some uninterrupted power, uninterrupted power supply system to a unit like this? There's nothing today that gives us that level of flexibility. And remember, we're not dealing with just a household current. You're dealing with a substation, so it's not quite that simple a transition because of the load characteristics. And frankly, the character of the substations that supply the power and how they're linked to this distributive grid, we can do a lot and do a lot in what we call the load shedding space. So if you have a situation where you have some ability to plan for a defined loss or a loss of power, there's a lot we can do, and we have redundancies in our systems that allows us to load shed fairly well in a controlled environment, the relays and other switchgear that's in that substation that would have created this problem.
Do you remember, Greg, what circuit they're on? We had Edison in here about a year and a half, two years ago, giving us an assessment of their capital improvement projects and how bad some of the circuits were. Butane was problematic, if I remember correctly, and a couple of other ones that were on the commercial side.
Yeah, I don't recall, Rod. We have probably 16 Edison circuits that serve the city. Are you on a dedicated circuit?
I suspect we're on a dedicated circuit. And the reason I say that is that in our vernacular, we have what is called a ring bus. So Edison brings in at their main substation, their power, let's say it comes in at 66 KV, it's coming in at a very high rate. And then, so it starts to get transformed down from there, and then gets fed to, we have, I think, something on the order of 36 to 42 substations. I think we've grown a little bit in terms of the number of subs as we've replaced equipment. So there's a, so I'm pretty confident, I don't know for sure, that we probably are on a dedicated system, just because of the relative scale. You know, we're drawing, remember, we're drawing on any given day, we're drawing 130 megawatts of power. That's a community of about 300,000. So I got to believe it's dedicated, Greg, but I apologize, I don't know for sure.
So is Edison giving any explanation in terms of what caused the?
So let me be clear. It wasn't a loss of power off of the grid that will have impacted the unit. It was clearly when that power got to our substation, Mayor Boils, it did not come from...
Oh, so it was your proprietary substation?
Yeah, it would have come from our proprietary substation, correct. I don't want to mislead anybody and suggest that this was Edison's problem this time around. There have been plenty of opportunities for that, but they're not here, so that can't be...
And so this investigator, whoever, I assume it's AQMD, whoever's doing the investigation, that will be part of the investigation as well as what caused the thing?
Yeah, and the fire department here, the COPA. So your COPA will be involved in that whole review of the incident circumstances, as they already have many parts of it. But yeah, typically, the AQMD will have their piece of the puzzle. Other agencies, but particularly, say, the COPA locally on behalf of CalEPA, for example, would have a principal role in all of that as well.
Okay. Couple more real quick. There were some car wash certificates that were handed out for residents that did not, like on the west side of town. I know for a fact that, you know, I received one. For those that didn't partake, they might still have a car that's covered with...
They can still get a car wash certificate, absolutely. Or if they have a property issue, they can contact us as well. We still are operating the number that was provided on the flyer, so that's 310-615-3747, I believe. That number's still, for a week plus, we had people handling, calling, I mean, answering it live. At this point, it'll go into a message system, but it'll get pulled out.
I know I called, whoever I spoke with, she was incredibly helpful, so.
And so it's, so yeah, yes, you can still get a voucher. We still have, if there are any questions about people's property or any of those circumstances, that they're there and they'll respond.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I had for Mr. Spackman. Chris, did you have a question?
Just one quick question for residents who are interested in what some of these definitions mean. So when we say a nuisance finding from AQMD, or if they want to do their own research into what's aluminum oxide, what does a catalyst look like, is there a resource that we can point them to? Does the AQMD website something that they should be leaning toward? I'm not sure where these things exist definitionally. I mean, there's certainly people, the residents, who are very interested in these things for their own edification.
So if you looked up FCC catalyst on the web today, you'd find definitions for the material, you'd find a variety of different literature on it. You have to be a little careful, because you're talking, there are two different particular types. One is either regenerated or fresh catalyst versus spent cad, spent can't looks different than fresh catalyst does.
But there's no proprietary mixture, there's no secret sauce?
No, there's, I mean, there are companies that make this material, and within their own company, they'll have a formula, if you will, that's proprietary to them in terms of how they merchandise it to the consumer, in this case, or an industrial consumer. But it's not particularly unique in the context of broad literature on it.
Well, I think that a lot of us have gone through and seen the manner by which the rehearsals for these sorts of events occur aboard Chevron, and certainly, it's, I think, gratifying on our end to see that when there is an event, the response plays out according to plan in a way that although you can't put a plug in it and stop it, that the way we notify and react and react in partnership with the city seems to work very well.
I just would like to close by saying one additional thing. I've been at this asset for 32 years, so public trust is a big deal to me. It has been for a long time. I think that one of the issues that I'm most, I don't want to say I'm concerned about, but I think about out of this event, is wanting to make sure that the public does truly understand our operation and trying to figure out how we effectively respond to some of the issues associated with the events and whether or not we've lost some of the public's trust. A lot of people, and I won't say this, this is not true of El Segundo, and I'm not trying to make this generalization, but a lot of folks, rightfully, don't understand, and so this isn't the opportunity to educate them. We need to deal with, effectively, with the incident. But over time, I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity to try and work through some of those issues, particularly for new people, new residents, that don't have a sense of our operations or any history with it. And we're always open to those opportunities to educate, to be as transparent as we reasonably can be, even though some people will presume that that would not be our personality. I know it's not my personality, and I don't think it's the personality of the management team at the facility, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spackman. Appreciate your time. Greg, just internally, I alluded to this earlier, but when did we, when were we notified as a city of what had transpired, and how long did it take for us to get word out via NICSIL to the residents?
We're referring to the first event, the flaring event?
Yes.
Let me open the document. Chief, do you have yours? I'll ask the fire chief to help me with this. And Chief, why don't you tell the council and the community how we were notified also?
Thank you, Mayor. September 17th at 7:45 a.m., we were dispatched by our regional communication center following notification from Chevron. They followed typical protocol. They had a disruption on the plant. They notified our command and control dispatch center, who toned out for us a first alarm assignment. So we initiated a response at 7:45 a.m. En route to the call, we were recontacted by our command center, the dispatch center, who updated us that it was a controlled flare operation. The first alarm assignment had outside mutual aid resources coming in, so per protocol, we canceled outside mutual aid resources, continued El Segundo resources. The on-duty battalion chief arrived on scene, went through our typical protocol. We made face-to-face with Chevron battalion chief. They did a site assessment. They actually drove to the flare location. They monitored the situation in pretty quick order, realizing that it was a stable flare. We reduced our operation and released our resources. That response, again, was at 7:45 a.m. At 8:19 a.m., we sent out the first NICSIL community alert. And this was, again, our protocol is we want the incident commander to be involved in the NICSIL alert. So at that point, the on-duty battalion chief had made contact with the police department watch commander, as well as Randy Collins, our emergency management coordinator, and the NICSIL alert was sent out as per our internal protocol. And we also, at 9:11, initiated an alert El Segundo reverse 911 call. So both of those notifications occurred subsequent to our initial response to the refinery.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have a goal? I know you and I talked about this, Greg. I don't know if it's been clearly established yet, but I think, given, you know, this is similar to what Mr. Spackman said. I think without information, people are left to speculate and sometimes assume the worst. And when 34 minutes pass before we get a NICSIL out, and we know, you know, we might not have had all the information, but could we not have communicated something to the public, like we are aware that this is going on and we have resources deployed?
Certainly. We've been talking about this the last couple of weeks, and, you know, you can't be fast and good. So our typical approach is to wait until we have good information and put that out. But that's really thinking internally about what we know and that sort of past practice. And what we're learning is people really want more immediate information on what we do know, and, you know, something to the effect of there's been an incident, we are responding, and we will be providing more information via these means or methods at some point. When we have that information, it could probably go a long ways to letting people know that the city is aware of the situation, that information will be forthcoming, and how that information's going to be transmitted. So we've talked about trying to get something out and, you know, something more akin to the 10 or 15-minute timeframe with at least that initial alert to the community.
Yeah, because I didn't look at the timestamps, but if I had to guess about how long it took for something to hit El Segundo parent's network, as an example, is a question mark, was probably within 60 seconds. And so because people are expecting, to your point, that immediacy, even if we have incomplete information, knowing that the fire department is aware and deployed is a big step forward versus, does anyone even know what's going on at the city? So I think, personally, I would like to see that. I think that 10-minute goal is great to strive for, and again, it could be just we're aware and we're on it. Next update within 10 minutes. We have new, new information. Next update in 10 minutes. So that would be my ask.
I just also want to make sure to say one thing. I know, Rod, you guys, the Chevron, had people out taking tests of the environment, correct? I just want you, you didn't mention that, but I just want to make sure people are aware that you did have people going out around the neighborhood testing the air quality throughout the day.
Yes, we did. Both during the immediacy of the event, we had people out, a number of people from our environmental affairs staff, working with the fire department and also with the AQMD, and then we submitted all that data to them. So we had people actively monitoring for any constituents... And then we submitted all that data to them. So we had people actively monitoring for any constituents that would be potentially hazardous or provide a unique risk to the community. And we didn't see anything beyond, obviously, some of the particular smoke, but even that was at fairly low concentrations for what we measured.
All right.
I think what Rod said is important, too. And as much as you never want an event like this to happen, for people that have been in this town for a long time, I mean, I got notified by my kids at seven forty-three. And I think I was texting Greg at seven forty-four. And he said, "I don't know." And I said, "Fair enough." And I looked, I went and looked, and I said, "Oh, it's, that's a safety flare." I said, "Guys, it's okay. The only time you see that happening is if they have to. They're only doing that if they absolutely have to for safety, to avoid an explosion." And I must have repeated that twenty times at Center Street drop-off between eight-ten and eight-twenty, because, you know, the NICSIL hadn't gone out yet. And I said, "Look, just everyone calm down. They're likely going to have the kids stay inside and not go out the recess, and everything's going to be okay." And, you know, that's, to your point, that's all the people wanted to really hear, was just like, "It's okay. The Chevron plant is not exploding. This is not a major meltdown." And that's really all they want to know. But we can use this as an opportunity to teach the public as to what some of these safety measures are so they understand when they see something like that, it's like, "Oh, okay, they're doing that to avoid an explosion, and it should rarely ever happen." But, yeah, to that point, having that information and those goals is key.
Thank you both. Appreciate it. All right. We already did roll call. And let's go right into public communications. I know we have a presentation from West Basin Director Scott Houston.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Boils and members of the council. And really, maybe not so much a presentation, but I just wanted to come down and give you guys a quick update on some activities we've got coming up at the water district. And I provided some materials to you all up there, so you can follow along with me real quick. But also, I want to mention, I think in one part, it's very timely, I happened to be here tonight because as we go into Fire Prevention Week, of course, the water district works thoroughly with our water, with our fire protection partners around the district, including areas like Palos Verdes and up in the Malibu area, and Topanga, where water is so critical, important. So as we look at conservation efforts and water supply situations, I really want to commend our firefighters for the work they're doing, and thank you guys for supporting that, as well as the fact with industry, and Chevron being one of our major customers at West Basin. You know, obviously, we all work together in this community to do the work we do, to produce the products we produce, and of course, at the local level, as a water supplier, to provide the water to this community. So, real quick, as a matter of fact, yesterday, October first, began the water year. So from now moving forward, we'll be hearing our precipitation reports across the state of California. As you know, it was a very hot and dry last twelve months. We don't know for sure what the next twelve months will bring us, but that by all means does not mean for us to become comfortable and complacent in our approach to water management as a resident, as a business, and certainly at the water district. I also wanted to mention that October typically is when you get even more wildfires in California. I think you all know this, but I just read an article about that yesterday. A lot of people forget. They think that, you know, August and September, but turn around in October is when we see a lot of fires and a lot of, you know, smoke and ash around our region, depending on when those fires hit us. So real quick, what I wanted to bring to you guys, to your attention, is three different flyers I left for you. By the way, to the residents and the public, everything I'm going to talk about is on our website, westbasin.org, so you can go there. But number one is our turf removal rebate program is back. And I know that members of the public may or may not be aware of this, but turf removal rebate program is back. So that means where the water district is paying residents to take out turf for one dollar a square foot, up to fifteen hundred square feet at their property. As a matter of fact, on top of that, West Basin, we're also offering a series of classes in our service area. So if residents want to learn more about taking advantage of this opportunity, or get more specifics through our staff, they have that, that chance. And you can go on the website. I've left some flyers in the lobby, but one of the classes will actually be held right here in El Segundo in January at the Center Street School. So I want members of the public to be aware of that. And what they need to do is to go to the website, you know, our website, which will link you to this one, because you need to get into the queue for this money. This is first come, first served across all of Southern California. So West Basin is only one of the member agencies. And so if you're interested in taking advantage of that, residents need to put their name on that list and get moving. Secondly, West Basin, in our fiscal year, which just started in July, we are once again doing our water bottle filling station grant program, which I know the city of El Segundo is very familiar with. As a matter of fact, last year, we put two drinking fountain stations into facilities in El Segundo. One, of course, right here at City Hall, and the other at the Center Street School. So I'm really proud that our board, it was a great pilot program last year. It was very successful. And we launched it again this year. As a matter of fact, I understand that El Segundo High School has already applied. So I would encourage, if it's the school district, if it's the city, if you're looking to replace a water fountain on one of your facilities, look at this grant program. We could provide up to a thousand dollars toward one of these drinking fountain stations. One of the last things I want to bring to your attention, of course, is our annual water harvest at the plant over in El Segundo. This is our annual open house. This year, because our facility is going through a lot of expansion work, a lot of construction, including a new visitor center, so the facility is pretty much off limits for the public. But we're going to do a block party. So we're doing a block party over on Hughes Way. I want to thank the city, by the way, for helping us get this, these permits and authorizations to do that. But what we wanted to do was say, we're still going to do the annual water harvest and have members of the community be available to come and see the work that we do at West Basin. So I invite all the council members, I hope you can make it, Saturday, October twentieth, ten to two o'clock in the afternoon. By the way, park where it tells you. Parking facility over on Grand Avenue with a free shuttle to bring you to our location. So the last thing I wanted to mention is rain barrels. We will be giving away more rain barrels again this winter. I anticipate doing that in this Division Four service area in January. I can say that over the last four years in Division Four, we've given away fifteen hundred rain barrels. So I'm super excited. Our board continues to fund this program. We don't get the rebates we used to get from Metropolitan on this, so we take it upon ourselves to do that. It's extremely popular. So once again, everything I said is on our website, westbasin.org. And I just encourage everyone to keep conserving, keep vigilant, and make sure that we're saving water and looking at this as a new way of our life in California. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Appreciate that. Any other public communications? Do we have some Boy Scouts in the audience who would like to approach the podium? No? Okay.
We got one. We got one.
Oh, wow. Also a fine member of the AYSO Boys U fourteen Team One, I might add.
Hi, my name is Daniel. My twin brother Gabriel and I are both part of Troop Seven Six Two from the El Segundo Sky House. We came because we were working on our Communications Mary Badge. And yesterday, we had a meeting with our counselor. The reason we came was because we had to finish up a couple, one of the requirements, which was to come, visit, and look at a City Hall meeting and, like, give your opinions about it, like, and other, and discuss with the counselor the other opinions of the other City Hall members, and what was really, like, all the topics that were being discussed, and what do you feel like was a main topic that was discussed. And we are also part of the U fourteen team. Mr. Boils is our coach.
Hey, when are we going to win a game?
Can we get a win-loss check? Win-loss check, Isle Two, sportsmanship points?
We've only won one game, though, but we're really, like, I don't have to say that.
Hey, it's a work in progress.
So the main reason we came was so then we could finish up the Mary Badge. But other than that, we were, we just came, wanted to understand what was really going on. And we've been writing a bunch of things for the Mary Badge. And yeah, that's basically what we've been doing here.
Gentlemen, thanks for coming. And you picked the right meeting, because odds are we'll be out of here by eight forty-five, if you have to stay for the whole thing. I can't promise that, but I'm just saying. Over-under is at eight twenty-six. So thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for everything you do with the Scouts. Great program.
Thank you.
Any other public communications? Okay. Any city council comments?
Could I throw in one quickly, jumping to the water harvest? I think, in conjunction with, when we talked about Chevron, we, on the council, are often privy to the way that some of our larger partners operate. So we've been aboard the refinery, and we've seen, you know, the downstream refining process. In the same manner, our relationship with West Basin, I know a lot of citizens, you know, you may not understand what that involves. When they talk about the recycling program and how they use and reuse water, the sheer scale of what they are able to harvest from Hyperion, I mean, you're talking somewhere in the area of forty to fifty million gallons of water every day that's recharged in a hundred-plus wells up and down the coast. And those numbers are a little tough to conceptualize if you're not an engineer. But the sheer volume of water that they work to every day is really something to behold. So if people can make it out to that, I think it's worth seeing and appreciating.
Totally agree. And then I highly recommend drinking the water, once it's been recycled, believe it or not. And it's totally, totally healthy, fine. I've drank it. And there's legislation coming, right, to hopefully get to DPR, Direct Portable, right? So we'll see. Okay, thank you. Let's go to procedural motion. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five oh. We have, under Special Orders of Business Public Hearing Number One, consideration of possible action to amend the development standards of the corporate campus specific plan CCSP VF four C eight to allow balconies to project up to ten feet into a required setback. The city council certified a final EIR on January second, two thousand and two, for development of the CCSP. The proposed project is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, California Public Resources Code twenty-one thousand, usually referred to as SEQA. And the regulations promulgated there under fourteen California Code of Regulations fifteen thousand, the state SEQA guidelines, since it involves a minor revision to development standards. No new significant effects previously analyzed in the FEIR will result from a minor modification to the development standards. Accordingly, no further environmental review is required pursuant to fourteen Cal Code Regulations fifteen thousand one six eight A three in connection with the issuance of rules and regulations. Applicant William Missore, representing Ava Airways Corporation, fiscal impact none. And I see our director of planning and building safety, Sam Lee.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Boils, members of the council. I have a very brief presentation for you tonight. It's an amendment to the corporate campus specific plan. The item is an architectural feature that was not originally anticipated for the project. Staff believes that this element will enhance the project. We're very supportive. The ordinance before you, if approved, will allow balconies to project into the required setback and make the appropriate changes to the specific plan. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Staff didn't prepare any pictures for the presentation because we didn't want to be redundant, because the applicant has a presentation for you with a lot of pictures and also update on the, on the construction. We thought you'd be curious. So if the council wishes, if you don't have any specific questions about the staff report, I'd like to recommend that the applicant come up and do his presentation. We'll show a lot of pictures of the balcony and the project overall.
Is council okay with that? Yes, great. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Boils, council members. My name is Bill Missore. I'm representing EVA tonight. It's kind of exciting to be here tonight, because this is the last piece of Campus El Segundo to be developed. You may all recall that back in nineteen ninety, Rockwell demolished the entire forty-six acres that were there. Soccer fields are there today. The fire station is there. I was with Mar Ventures at the time. We developed the Edge and back in two thousand and five. Elevon in two thousand and fifteen. Clearly, the Hyatt Place Hotel opened in twelve twelve twelve. And recently, we finished the Buildings for Moose Toys. Last year, they're there. And the AC Hotel is under construction. We'll show you some photographs. And now the EVA project. So let's show you a couple of pictures of that, if I'm doing it the right way. So the site plan, EVA's project, I kind of like to call it Alto Fisina is the name of it now. It's got a website, altofisina.com. And I like to reference it kind of as a vertical elevon. So basically, it's a for-sale project for ownership. EVA is going to occupy forty thousand square feet in the project, the top two floors of the south building. They'll occupy the top two floors of the south building there. And the parking structure actually has bridges that connect on the second and the fourth floor. So if you drive up, you can park on a second floor, walk across a bridge into your space. We only started marketing it two weeks ago, and I'm happy to say there's five El Segundo businesses that have already expressed an interest in the project. There's two attorney's offices. There's a, there's a toy company, actually Moose Toys wants to grow and expand to one of the suites. There's a marketing firm, and there's a software company, all based in El Segundo, looking to get out of their lease base, going into owned space. It started construction a couple of months ago. It'll be completely vertical by the end of November. It's two five-story buildings, a total of a hundred fifty thousand square feet, and a five-hundred-story parking garage that goes with it. That's the picture actually from the parking structure that was built for Moose Toys and for the AC Hotel. And on this picture, you can kind of see somewhat some of the balconies that are projecting onto Campus Drive, and they also project somewhat on Campus Square West. They're all within the setback of the patio, so they're less than the patios that are there. And back when we asked for a specific plan amendment, when we did Elevon, we'd asked for the patios to project in the setback space. And frankly, we should have said balconies, I mean, patios and balconies. We could have avoided today's meeting, but we didn't. So to be specific on the amendment, we're now adding balconies to that language. So here's a rendering of the project. That is right across the street from the soccer fields. EVA is again occupying the top two floors of this building here. Every single unit, there's like thirty-five units for sale. Every single unit has a balcony or a patio. The exterior is a combination of Trespa, weathered metal, similar to the retail at Elevon and Stucco. There's another view. That's from Nash Street on the left. And the photo on the right is the intersection of Campus Drive and Campus Square West. These are some of the balconies. You might even see some of the signage on there. Every one of the owners will be entitled to a blade sign on the building, which should give them identity as they drive down Campus Square West or Campus Drive. That's the courtyard between the parking garage and the office building to the south. There's four fire pits in there. There's a fountain. Again, it's a community area that will then, you know, bring, lead more people to the retail at both the Edge and at Elevon. There's kind of an aerial photo. And again, this is the last, between the AC Hotel, Moose Toys, and EVA, those are the last five acres that are being developed at Campus El Segundo. And frankly, the EVA project is originally anticipated, or envisioned by Thomas Properties when they got the entitlements in the beginning. It was zoned at a point nine-nine FAR. The Edge and Elevon were done at a point four-two, so the development agreement allowed development transfer rights, which EVA obtained, to allow them to build at a one-point-seven FAR. And again, the original project overall was point nine-nine, and I think had one, two million square feet. With this project, it'll actually be a million square feet, fully built out, about nine-hundred-fifty-thousand square feet, including the Lakers headquarters. But you can see the block starts with EVA, the Moose Toy building there, and then that's the AC Hotel in the background. And just for your interest, the AC Hotel is well underway. It's a hundred-and-eighty-room hotel. Dr. Brand actually came to see a couple of the model rooms about a month ago. And those are the model rooms. They're actually built today. So if any of the council members or staff would like to tour the hotel, you know, please get ahold of me. And we're very proud of it. It's going to have the first rooftop bar in El Segundo. And I think that's going to be a very popular place for people to be. And there's just a night picture of the hotel, and you can see EVA in the background of that photograph. And that's the end of the presentation. Don't know if you have any questions. Happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Missore. Couple of questions. You said thirty-five units for sale. What's, what's the average square footage?
Twenty-five hundred square feet.
Twenty-five hundred? So you're looking for owner-occupied, small businesses?
Correct.
Leverage the SBA? Leverage the SBA, business loans, great.
Correct.
What's the, I have another question for you. Why, oh, I remember the history back, I think when I was on Economic Development Council, maybe on city council, I can't recall. But at one point, Ava was considered a different use altogether for the facility. Why the shift? I'm just curious. I love what it's become. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, so just more background, the originally UVA project was a combination of what they called a private hotel, a corporate hotel. And I remember sitting down with Greg several times, helping them negotiate the TOT for that use. I was involved, you know, with UVA back at the time. And along with that, they had about a forty, sixty thousand square foot office building for themselves. UVA had a management change back in Taipei, so their vision changed. A new CEO, and the new CEO didn't go forward with the original project and changed it to this one, which against, I think is better actually for the city and for the businesses here. But it was a management change at UVA's headquarters back in Taipei that changed the direction of the project.
Okay, thank you. Do you have some performing numbers on what you're expecting? Can you say dollars per square foot on these new units? Are they similar to Elevon?
I mean, I can give you the full history of Edge, Elevon if you choose. But basically, you know, they have a tiered thing. As more sell, the price will hopefully escalate. So six hundred dollars a square foot is the number that would be kind of in that ballpark.
Target, yeah, okay, that's great.
And again, we have the five businesses, but the five businesses are actually under letter of intent for, one business is buying three units, one's buying four. So there's eleven units out of the total that are currently being negotiated right now.
Of the thirty-five, how many do you anticipate will be new businesses to El Segundo?
That's really hard to tell, but based on experience at both the Edge and at Elevon, predominantly, the businesses are coming from the local community, but maybe thirty, forty percent. We had companies coming from the west side, both at Elevon, at the Edge, Manhattan Beach businesses. But predominantly, there's South Bay and some west-side people that come in, but I couldn't tell you a percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great. Thank you for your time. Okay. Sam? You have a recommendation that we approve the...
If you could schedule a second, second reading for October sixteenth.
I'd like to introduce the ordinance and schedule that second reading for our next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, this is actually a public hearing, so you might want to just double-check to make sure there's no one in the audience that wants to speak on it before we introduce the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this matter before we introduce it? Okay, thank you. Dr. Brand?
Yeah, a motion to close the public hearing.
Great.
Second?
Second. I heard one over here. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay.
And then I'll say for the record again, I'd like to introduce the ordinance and schedule a second reading for the sixteenth of October, our next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, you guys did it again. That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Five oh?
I can read the ordinance title, just into the record.
Thank you.
An ordinance approving amendment to the corporate campus specific plan development standards to allow balconies to project into a required setback.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. Okay. Unfinished business. Number two. Consideration of possible action to receive and file a report on accessory dwelling unit ADU plan checks and permits since adoption of the ADU ordinance in July 2017. This is a twelve-month review, fiscal impact none. Mr. Lee?
Yes, so this is the twelve-month report. Last summer, the council approved a accessory dwelling unit ADU ordinance. At the twelve-month mark, we currently have thirty-six ADUs in the various different processes of plan check or in construction. Thirteen of them are attached to or over a garage. Twenty-two are detached standalone structures. They are either new or conversion of a previous accessory building. One ADU is inside of, inside of a house. And the sizes of these units range from three hundred, a little over three hundred square feet to twelve hundred square feet. And the average size is seven hundred and fifty square feet. And as a reference point, at the six-month mark, we had thirteen. So in that, the second six-month, we've accelerated quite a bit. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lee?
Yeah, the maximum square footage we set, was it twelve hundred?
Yes, sir.
And what did you say your biggest one is so far?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. How many of those do you have?
I believe about four.
Okay.
Yeah. I have the individual items. I expect there are about four of them.
Thank you.
Sam, can you remind me, when somebody gets their permit for an ADU, do we require them to sign a covenant that it will be, that some portion of the property will be owner-occupied?
Yes.
Okay.
That was a requirement that the council approved.
So what happens if someone is not? What's the procedure? I just, just so I understand, so when I get asked it on the street, I can answer it properly?
It would be a code enforcement case. And if the owner doesn't cooperate, then it could lead to a court case.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Pimentel?
If you're comfortable, can you give just a pretty brief synopsis? There were a number of options to this that the planning commission brought forward to council before it became an ordinance. And we've approved a pretty sweeping, pretty sweeping ordinance that allows people a broad level of flexibility with what to do about it, or what to do with their property. There are some other options out there that I think have floated around. There's a degree of misconception sometimes with residents about what those entail. I was wondering, are you comfortable just summarizing a bit of what some of the discussions were that we opted not to go with?
What not to go with? Well, I could, I could discuss, maybe as a frame of reference, I can discuss what was discussed at the planning commission level.
Yes.
And then kind of when that, when those recommendations were brought forward to the council level, what was kept and what was changed?
That would suffice.
Would that help? So at the planning commission level, the items that were discussed was to not allow garage conversions, to allow them in R1 zones, allow them in R2 zones, R2 zones that are less than four thousand square feet. Because R2 zones, less than four thousand square feet, duplexes are not allowed. So they felt that those should get it. They limited the size to eight hundred square feet. And they, they allowed, they allowed ADUs only if it was attached to a garage or a house. That's important because they were trying to incentivize people to not think about converting their garages to, to, to any, anything other than what a garage should be used for. So they specifically said they'll allow the eight hundred square feet if it's attached to a garage or the existing house. And then the covenant requiring that the, one of the units be occupied by the owner. So those, that's about what the planning commission had recommended. The council increased the eight hundred square foot limit to twelve hundred square feet. And they also removed the attachment to, to a garage, where you can have a detached independent structure as a ADU.
I think as we go forward and receive these reports, as we progress with the ADUs, as they become a part of our housing stock, I think it's worth noting that there was grave reservation about this de facto becoming R2s and R1s by building purpose-built separate structures. And those dire warnings, because two-thirds of these are precisely that, are things that, or if considered proceeding apace, are things worth monitoring. I think there is a valid density question that I think will be asked. And as ADUs become a part of the law of the land in California, it is going to be something that's very difficult to change as things look to be forced upon us about what can be ADUs, as people try to make garage conversions and those things part of the state mandates. So I know six months from now, we'll be looking at this again. I think we need to be very careful about the way we transform the way we live by making the R1 zone an R2 zone because of these purpose-built facilities.
I want to add, though, that there's an FAR component that you didn't mention. They still have to comply with the FAR.
That's true, yes.
So you can build twelve hundred if you can build twelve hundred with that FAR on your property. That's a, that's a very important distinction.
That's true, yes.
Also, did the state, what did the state basically would have overruled the whole garage attachment anyway, right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was going to mention, there was a bill that was pending in the legislature that would have actually required the city to recognize garage conversions and actually disallowed the city from requiring owner occupancy. So all those covenants would have been voided. The legislature died in committee. That was Senate Bill eight thirty-one. We were tracking it. It died. But it's possible it could come back. So if people are concerned about this, they should really be paying attention to what Sacramento's doing because there are certain legislators that really want to push this issue and make, make ADUs available to a lot of people.
The other point, I just, real quick, Carol, I just want to distinguish is that, one of the reasons, Chris, that we decided to, I think I suggested, and I think at least three people, I can't remember if it was a three-two or four-one, what the vote was.
Three-two.
On the allowing not just attached, you know, but we felt like homes with garages on the front of the property were a distinct disadvantage. That it would be very difficult to put an ADU anywhere. And that's half of our homes' stock. Call it forty percent. But that was one of the reasons. And certainly, there's parking concerns. There's other factors influencing that, like LAX. Hopefully, we get that parking study back any day now, which validates our concerns about employees and others parking in our backyard. But I just wanted to make that distinction. Carol?
I just want to reiterate, we did not require, which by law, we did not require any additional parking space. So this was an additional dwelling without any additional parking.
That's correct.
But I, I'm kind of aligning with Chris. I think we just need to keep our eye on this. If we really don't want our, our community to turn into, you know, a sea of duplexes in an R1 zone.
I'll just, I'm going to pat staff on the back here a little bit. When that entire discussion was going on at the planning commission level, I did some additional research into other cities. And I spoke to planning and building directors at three other cities and asked them, what are they doing about ADUs? And they said, we don't have the staff resources. We're doing nothing. We're just approving the resolution that the state is handing down. And so our staff actually took the time to look into it. Planning commission, just to evolve or to elaborate on Sam's conversation, it ended up being recommended unanimously, but it was a three-meeting, hour-long discussion per meeting deliberation where at one point, it was not allowing them to even be attached to the detached garage. There was, there were three planning commissioners that were very scared as to where this was going to take our housing element and where the future of our neighborhoods were going. And to Drew's point, there was, there were voices on the planning commission that also felt that it was unfair for those homes that had attached garages to then not be able to have a detached structure in the back. But it was a very fluid conversation that ultimately, all hedged on, well, isn't the state law going to supersede all this anyways? So why are we even having this conversation? But I do think we need to continue to monitor it. And obviously, continue to monitor whatever's happening at the state level. Because if the state law does change, we need to keep our finger on that pulse.
One more thing I want to emphasize. Although you're allowed twelve hundred, the average is seven to fifty, which is less than what the planning commission even allowed. So, and there's thirty, how many data points? Thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Okay.
Do we know how many of those are rented out as Airbnbs? I'm kidding. Don't answer that question.
Well, I believe we're going to be talking about...
We can't talk about that.
That's coming. All right, anything else on that? I think we're done with that one, right? Just the filing report, right?
It's receive and file, yeah.
Receive and file, thank you. Okay, nothing under D. Any polls on the consent agenda?
Got a question for city attorney on number six. Is that Smokey Hollow? Is that before we've been having a couple of council members recuse themselves? Is that not necessary now?
Right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if, if that, those items aren't polled, Mayor Boils and Councilmember Nichol can stay on the dais, and the record will reflect that they didn't participate in those particular items. It's only if the items are polled and discussed that they would have to leave the room.
I see. Okay, I'd like to poll number nine.
Any other polls?
Mr. Mayor, our office is actually asking that item number eight be continued to the next meeting.
Okay. So noted. Any other polls? All right, do I have a motion to approve items three, four, five, seven, eight, sorry, seven? That's it, I believe, right?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, five oh. Okay. Item... So you didn't pull Smokey Hollow, so...
No.
Okay, item eight is being continued. Item nine, Dr. Brand?
So nine, this is quite a lengthy list of transactions here. And I'm not prepared to vote to okay all of them. So either vote no on nine, or we can pick things off of it. Whatever the pleasure.
I had a question on nine as well. I mean, you polled it, but I guess, Greg, my question is, when we're doing budget sessions, we're approving almost like a macro budget per se because we're not going line-by-line through each individual department's budget, correct?
Well, I think your discussion and the focus of the conversation is really at the macro level. But you do, you do receive a draft budget document that has the line-by-line object codes for what we're going to spend the dollars on. This, so in this example, you would have approved professional technical budgets for all the departments. But you wouldn't have known at that point in time specifically which vendors or contractors were getting those contracts. This item follows up the budget and lists all of those specific vendors and the contracts for the upcoming fiscal year.
So then I just, I'm just going to make a statement just so that it's heard. Because I know you've shared with me that having contract labor as part of planning, building safety is just kind of a necessary evil. It's always going to have to be there to deal with the ebbs and flow of, of files that come in. But, I mean, I tallied at four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in consultant and professional services in building, planning, and safety. What is their total budget?
They're at about two-and-a-half million.
So it's twenty percent of their budget?
So what, what this is used for is, one is, these are all exceeding the city manager's authority. City managers up to fifty thousand approve contracts. Instead of bringing each of these individually, it's individual staff reports. We're kind of lumping them all together at the beginning of the fiscal year, so council can approve them. Two, and a lot of these amounts that are listed, for instance, the ones that you just mentioned for planning and building safety. Also, there's one on there for Robert Half, a half-million dollars. That's for citywide contract services for vacancies. So that, that doesn't necessarily mean that that full amount of the contract will be utilized. But if, if positions do not get filled, that gives the department the ability to backfill those vacancies with contract staff while we're doing recruitments.
Our staff is encouraged to fill those positions, though, correct?
Absolutely.
I mean, or is this just, but because this has been on our budget and it's going on and on, year after year after year after year, at some point, it's, well, are we just not trying to fill those positions?
No, no, so...
Because you understand what I'm saying, like if you always have this fallback, then you're not really incentivized to fill those positions.
Absolutely. So if we reference planning and building safety, which is what your question was, Sam is in the process of filling several vacancies. Right now, we did recruitments for his various positions in August, September. I know he's going to be onboarding staff here pretty soon. But he does still have additional vacancies. And, you know, we're up to, citywide, we're up to about forty vacancies right now.
If I could, there's some things that we need to clarify from the staff report. So if I can have just a moment. So I looked at the staff report, and there are some things that are not a hundred percent correct. And what I mean by that is, so, so J. Lee, J. S., and Hair Group are for building and safety. And that totals two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. The report also indicates that CSG and Michael Baker is for building and safety, but they're not. They're for planning, okay? And then of that, CSG is, is the funds for, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars. CSG is not being funded by the general fund. CSG is a purely, fully reemb... CSG is a purely, fully reimbursable from the developer. Specifically, CSG consultants are helping us with two projects, the air product site and the Raytheon site, the Phase One and the overall Raytheon project. So that hundred thousand dollars is not coming from the general, general fund budget. Michael Baker is being, being, is being utilized by planning's, planning's basic professional technical budget is twenty thousand dollars. That's all we have. Where we do, where we're getting the rest of the funds is the cost savings, salary savings from one of our vacancies. So, but we are, currently are in the recruitment for assistant planner. So then, that leaves us to building and safety for two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And the basic, the fundamental professional technical budget is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other hundred and five thousand dollars is coming from, also coming from vacancies from cost savings, from salary. Most notably, for the senior plant check engineer and the MEP, Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Plans Examiner, okay? So having said that, I wanted to clarify that. And then, I also wanted to move on to, and then clarify what Joe mentioned. We currently have two offers that's been accepted in the last four weeks. Those two people are our counterstaff, two counterstaff, which have been vacant for a long time. I can't even remember when was the last time we had two counterstaff at the same time. Currently, they're doing the, all the onboarding things, the background check, the health check and whatnot. We hope to get them on board within the next four weeks, so that's exciting, that's great. We've also been recruiting for a senior plant check engineer for quite a bit, in the last twelve, eighteen months, I want to say. We've gone out for two separate recruitments, which takes three, four months to put together and go through interviews and go through and whatnot. Of the first recruitment efforts, we had two candidates we wanted to make an offer to, and we did make offers to. Both candidates chose different cities to go to, and they didn't come to work for us. So we scrapped that recruitment, and we started a new recruitment. And those interviews happened like four weeks ago, five weeks ago. As I said, things have been really moving since Joe and Juliana's taken over HR. And of that, honestly, there were eight applicants, two of them didn't show, and one passed. We interviewed that one, and honestly, it didn't, we chose not to offer that offer. So we're thinking of a different strategy. It's clear that in this construction boom, it's really difficult to find an experienced plant checker out there. And if somebody's really good, they're prone to stay at where they are. So what I'm thinking, and I spoke to Greg and Joe, that I may think about underfilling the position and going out to recruitment for somebody who has less experience. But if that person is the right person with the right mentality, right work ethic, that we may bring them on board and develop them to become a senior plant check engineer. Lastly, lastly, we're, we brought Lucas here, our building official, to answer any specific questions. But he's planning to go out for an RFP in the next four to six months. We hope to go out to eight to twelve consultants out there. And so some of these numbers that are on the staff report today are kind of placeholders because when the RFP comes back, we'll be coming back to council with the results of the RFP, and maybe different consultants will be requested for the, for the contract. So that is conclusion to my statement, and I'll be happy to answer any questions here.
One approach could be that, well, I know Dr. Brand had a concern about at least one item. We could, I guess, isolate the, the numbers that you're not comfortable with or want further discussion on, and then have a motion to approve all the others.
Well, don't we have public communication that came in regarding number ten within number nine? I don't know if we want to discuss that, I don't know if we don't want to discuss that.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly, if you want to isolate that item, we can do that. Dr. Brand, was there an item in particular that you were concerned about?
Yes, besides the ones that Councilmember Nichol's just been talking about, that's three through seven, I'd like to learn more about, and then number one troubles me as it did last year. But that's it.
Okay, so I've got those identified, and then Councilman Nichol, did you want to poll item ten for discussion?
Well, I guess I just wanted a little bit more background on it. Oddly enough, I saw this on the agenda and thought, oh, I never thought the city paid for the crossing guards. I just assumed the school district provided the crossing guard service. And then oddly enough, that same day, I get approached by somebody at the school, and it's, do you know how many near misses we have at these intersections? And I drive through three of the intersections they discuss with me that day, and I'm, I'm in agreement with them. Yes, I'm surprised there are not crossing guards there, but I didn't realize that this burden, financial burden fell upon our shoulders. So what I have done is added this item to the school board, city council meeting that we have tomorrow to discuss with them, but I guess I just wanted to maybe understand some little history on it, Greg. Have we always paid for the crossing guards?
Before we go there, let's see if there are any others. So right now, I have three through seven and ten polled, are there any other polls from this list before we go to that one?
And, and one, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, and one, yes, sir. No, okay, all right, now, let's go, can we go back to one? We'll start with one, real quick, okay, Dr. Brand?
Well, like I said, last time this came up, I don't think we do enough to be effective in advancing our position with LAX. I was telling Greg earlier tonight, I really enjoyed his write-up in the City Manager News about the city's relationship with LAX. I thought it was well-balanced presentation. But I just think we need to do a lot more than what we've traditionally been doing with our lobbyists and our attorneys because I don't think we're winning. So I'm not gonna support number one.
Okay, any other discussion on item one?
Just a quick point of clarification, is that you don't advocate the selection of vendor or the process? I'm not disagreeing with you at all, just-
It'd be vendor, Chris, because we've had the same one for a long, long time, and I just don't think we're scoring many points here. So I, I'm not against having a lobbyist or an attorney firm. I just think we need to have the right ones, and then to do much, much, much more. I'd like to see us designate a couple million dollars or more of our reserves for a fund to deal with LAX. And we'd still get interest on that money, but it would just send a message that we mean business. And you don't mean business when you spend seventy-five thousand here. That's pocket change to our neighbors to the north.
One thing I'll add is that High Point Strategies, which is the firm in, mentioned item one, they did on pretty short orders, secure us a very important meeting with the President of Southern California Association of Governments just this past Friday, which turned out to be an instrumental meeting because we'll probably get an appointment on their transportation committee, and they control all aviation policy, more or less, in Southern California. And I'll also add that, I don't think we want to say what the number is, but we've spent far greater than this in terms of litigation, other legal expense. We've got several firms that represent us, not just this one lawyer who happens to be a lobbyist. So we are spending a lot of money on LAX issues, I'll say. I support the strategy because I've worked closely with them for the last couple years, and I see that we are actually making movement, and I'm confident about our strategy going forward. So, you know, I, I support item one, so we can-
I support item one as well.
Okay, so that's a motion and a second, can I get a vote on item one? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
No.
I'll vote yes, but I'd like to, I think I'd like to know a little bit more about what their approach is. I'll admit that I, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm a bit ignorant as to how High Point Strategies approaches this. Because you work closely with them, I will defer and vote yes, but my, my, I side, I think, with Dawn in terms of temperament on this.
Okay, noted, thank you, Chris.
Are we okay to break it up like that?
I think we're okay, right? David would tell us if we're in poor stead, I think, at this point, okay. Okay, so that was a four-one on that one, Lily. Items three through seven, Don and Scott both had concerns about this. Did one of you want to take the lead on going through these?
I think Scott did a great job going through them, and Sam with his report. I guess I'd just like to pull this off and consider this, these types of items separately another time with more background and questions answered, then vote on to okay these tonight.
So what would, if we don't vote these tonight, what's the repercussions? And I know that Sam was saying that they was gonna, we were gonna go out to RFP. What's the timeline on the RFP coming back for some of these?
Well, I'll respond to the first question. I think there's some confusion about vacant positions creating the need to have consultants in planning and building safety. And the reality is, even when planning, building, and safety has been fully staffed, we still rely on consultants as part of our, part of our business model. If you don't have consultants and you have a set number of staff, that can work a set number of hours. And when developers like the, like the EVA airline building comes in, and they're willing to pay for expedited service, we're able to get on the phone, call a consultant, have them provide that expedited service, and meet their time schedules. If we don't have that ability, we're just working with our base staff levels. When we get busy, then we're not able to provide that, that type of service. We also use consultants for specialty service, and as Mr. Lee said, on the planning side, we use consultants as an extension of staff when developers want a dedicated planner, when they want, when they're willing to pay for that, when they want that additional service above our base level of service. So I don't see us ever being in a position where we're not using consultants to some extent in planning and building safety. Yes, we do have the five vacancies there now, that's created some issues with additional consultant need. As you heard, too, the positions have been filled or in the process of being filled and two are being recruited for. So hopefully, some of that need will decrease. The number that's being requested tonight is actually less than the number we've spent in years where we're fully staffed there. So I don't, I don't want council believing that there's ever gonna be a time when we're not relying on this sort of blended staffing model in that department because it does make sense for us. And if, if we aren't able to have consultants, then we'll do the best we can with the staff that we have, and they're good staff, and they'll do a good job, but there may be times when certain of our turnaround times and customer expectations are not gonna be met. If you don't approve these tonight, that simply means that we won't be able to enter into contracts with these folks. Our fiscal year started yesterday, so we won't be using consultants until we are able to come back to council and convince, provide the information that you need to make this decision. So there, there could be some service impacts. It's, you know, Sam probably, and Lucas probably have a better idea of what their, what their turnaround times are right now and whether or not customers are gonna be impacted by a delay tonight.
So is there a chance that we could just approve a half-year, six-month, a six-month?
I think that's what you reflected, correct, Sam?
Is that six months?
In these dollar amounts?
Yeah.
Which means that you're gonna come back in another six months and ask for more?
Well, well, if you recall, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the, the next six months. Because if you recall, this fiscal year, the end of seventeen, eighteen fiscal year, we collected an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in plant check. It's about a fifteen percent bump from what we normally get. And then we got an overall six hundred thousand square, six hundred thousand dollars over what we normally get. So when the plan check is fifteen percent higher, we, we take a real close look at that because that precedes all the work that's gonna happen on the inspection side. And we're already kind of seeing that, that number of inspections and the request for inspections is already at an uptick, right? Which was the reason why during the budget process, I had asked for more funds because we were anticipating spending some more money. If I could suggest, what we could do is, you know, I would request that you approve these numbers because, as, as Mr. Carpenter mentioned, if I have to stop consultant services, and Lucas can talk about this a little further, if, if I have to call those consultants, they, they provide services at the counter. Remember, the, the two, two new people at the counter aren't gonna start within, you know, for another three, four weeks. Those two folks are not gonna show up, we have no counterstaff if you don't approve this. We have our third inspector gets paid by this. With the uptick in inspection, we were gonna have a hard time complying with getting inspections done within twenty-four hours. And we have our, some of our larger projects that we've kind of committed to meeting their timelines and expectations. We're gonna have a hard time meeting those timelines, meeting. So, but having said that, if you approve this, what, what I can do is I can commit to providing a report quarterly to kind of update you on how the money's being spent, where we are in the process. And then, in the, in the four-to-five month period, we can come back with an RFP as well.
One thing I was just thinking about, Greg, is that when, and Sam. I think if we had a clearer sense through our KPI, something we were talking about earlier today, like, we're doing this much activity per this headcount, including consultants, and we knew where we're at, we wouldn't have any issue whatsoever saying, go forward. But it, I mean, I, I understand your pain, Sam, and I hear from developers like Conanel Development Corp. that they want those resources available, they don't want any delay in projects being implemented. So I'm leaning towards just, I think, I feel like Sam and his department and Greg and Joe have vetted these numbers, and we gotta trust what they're asking for, and, because we've been very, I think, very careful fiduciaries to this whole budgeting process, and this is a reduction from the past. But it would be easier, Sam, Greg, if there was like, you know, here's where we're at in terms of productivity per headcount or activity, and here's where we think we're headed, and this is why, so it's a little bit more justification. You know, it makes us feel better about it and able to answer to constituents, et cetera.
See, I just, I wanna back up a little bit because when we approved all of the new fees, right? When it comes to building and planning safety, we can only legally charge what it costs for us to perform that service, okay? So when I'm looking at, their budget's only two point five million dollars, they do a lot. Why? Because most of that money is, most of that service is paid for with fees, right? It should be like a break even. So then, when I'm seeing numbers that equal, if we, even if we take out that hundred thousand, because that's just for the traffic consultants and things like that, we're talking three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, where it's, so did we build in this extra cost of consultants into that fee schedule when we did that fee assessment? Or are we essentially losing money on that fee assessment? Because we're charging this, when really, because we're using consultants to do that work, it's costing us that. Does that make sense?
Yes, when we did the, the fee assessment, the consultant came in and looked at, you know, what has been our business model for the last, you know, X amount of years? Where are we in seventeen, eighteen, that's the year that he came in and did the study? And where are we heading? So like Greg has mentioned, planning and building safety has always used a hybrid blend model of both city staff and contract staff. So that's the model that was used for the fee study for planning and building safety. If that addresses your question or not?
Yeah, I just, so we're safe, we're not putting ourselves in a position where someone can come to us, they can challenge our fees.
Yeah, yeah, I believe that we are, that was the purpose of the study. And, and just to expand on, on one comment that you made, Scott, you're right, that, that fees generally can only offset the, the cost of providing the service, except where someone's asking for preferential treatment. If someone wants their plan check to go from the end of the line to the front of the line, we're able to accommodate that by providing them with, with overtime plan check. Meaning, somebody is, is checking their plans on night or weekend. Oftentimes, that's a consultant that's providing that service, there is an upcharge for that, that preferential treatment. And that charge is paid for by the developer, but the consultant cost is reflected in, in these dollar amounts that you're being asked to approve tonight.
Do you think it would be helpful for this dais to have the kind of quarterly report that Sam's talking about, about how that money is being spent?
Sure, sure, and I, I think you'll see, you know, what percent- And I, I think you'll see, you know, what percentage of those dollars are being reimbursed by a developer or through overtime plan check. We can probably attribute more closely the number of consultant dollars that are attributable to vacancies so that, that you'll be able to see, um, what the effect of having those vacancies would be. You know, the other option would be if we want to use fewer consultants, but maintain our current service levels, be higher, hire more full-time staff. And there's a cost associated with that as well, right? Which in some cases is gonna be more than the cost of using consultant because of the, the pension and, and healthcare insurance as, associated with having more full-time employees.
Yes, but I guess, for instance, I messaged you the other day and asked about, um, somebody that was leaving, right? Russell. And in my mind, I, from the planning commission side, I was like, Russell's one of our full-time guys. Been here for a long time. He knows what we do. He's vetted. He, you know, he's good at this. And, uh, he knows CDC. He knows who all these people are. And then I come to find it, it's like, oh, well, he was a contract guy. He wasn't even one of our full-time guys. And I feel like, for me as a city, if we're truly going to be an employer of choice and have people that are gonna wanna stay here long-term, and I kind of know where you're gonna go with what you're gonna say, but I feel like I, I would rather know that these are one of our people that are gonna be here long-term, because we're investing in them as well.
Well, two things, um, I, I, I think the world of him as well. I think he's great. Um, he had actually applied for one of our positions in the past. Um, he, he, um, he went through the interview, but, um, he didn't, he didn't accept our position. He wanted to continue to work as, as a consultant. Um, and then, um, in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, um, we, we, we ran out of money. We couldn't, we couldn't afford him full-time. So, um, we gave him the option of working part-time. So he works us, with us, um, two days a week. And the other two days, he's a Michael Baker employee. Um, other two days of the week, he, he works, um, um, for other cities for Michael Baker. But, um, I agree. I think, I think, um, I think the world of him.
Because someone like that, that's been with us for that long, it's, I would say that there's a value in that history and that wisdom within the city. And instead of hiring someone brand new off the street to come in and learn all of our processes.
I, I talk to him weekly to see, you know, what, what we can do to offer to, uh.
Scott, do you or Don wanna entertain a motion on items three through seven? Do you wanna come up with something?
I think what Sam said works. I don't wanna change the course of action that's happening, but I think if he comes back with a report to us and lets us know how that money's being spent, that's fine. Because I think ultimately that's what we are trying to achieve up here, is just be those fiduciaries for the city. And when you see consultant fees over and over and over again, you, you start to wonder what's going on. So if we find out what's going on, then I think we'll be satisfied.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it, but I also wanna add, I know that we talked about going to RFP prior, like about a year ago, and we still haven't done that. So I, I know you said five months, but I think we should expedite that process a little bit faster.
Is that something Greg, we can address, or you wanna address that comment, Greg, before we take the vote?
What is a, what's an expedited process look like, Sam? Three months?
I mean, it's been over a year, so I just.
The RFP is ready to go. I, I saw a good draft of it. Um, we'll, we'll get it out, um, in the next month. Um, hopefully, when the, the three-month, uh, report, we can report something about the RFP.
That suffice, Carol?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Which item is this?
Three through seven.
Items three through seven.
Three through seven, okay, thank you.
Aye.
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 Dr. Brand?
No.
Okay, four one. All right, let's see, item ten, Councilman Nickel.
Just history. Greg, can you give us a history lesson?
You know, I, I believe that there were points in history where crossing, and Dr. Brown might know the answer to this, where crossing guards were provided by schools. But in recent, sort of modern times, um, as school funds have gotten more and more restricted in their use, I think cities have taken on this responsibility. And I think that the city of El Segundo has provided this service as a safety function, um, for a number of years. There are also, you know, there, there have been times where this has been provided probably by volunteers. But, uh, I think with increased responsibility, increased liability, um, cities have chosen to contract this service out. We don't use city employees, we use a contractor. Um, and, uh, we, we provide this service for, um, our citizens. Uh, probably five or six years ago, we did have a conversation with El Segundo Unified about taking this over, that the city was looking, the city was, during the great recession, was having some financial difficulties. We asked the school district if they would take it over. And their response was that they felt this was, that this was an important function. But, um, again, it's not the norm, at least in modern times, for school districts to provide this service. And they, um, respectfully, respectfully declined our request for them to do it, and we, we chose to continue doing it. So there is a, there's a set number of crosswalks that are currently staffed. Um, we, we, um, work with the school district, our public works and, and police departments, and with the vendor, um, to design safe routes to school. And they are laid out, um, and, and we provide crossing guards in those locations where we think there's the highest volume, um, and, and the most need. Um, we have seen, um, and I had this conversation with Joe, our finance director, we've seen this cost go up about twenty-five percent over the last few years. And we think that's mainly due to, um, the increase in minimum wage in the state of California. And Joe's asked me to look at reducing the number of crossing guards, and, and I said absolutely not. Um, that, that, that could be a problem. Um, I, I get that we need to, to look at, uh, saving money, but, uh, this is a sensitive and, and emotional issue. And, and I felt it was appropriate to maintain the, the current number of crossing guards. You've got, um, communications in your packet from one particular school that wants more. And I guess my question would be, if we were gonna look at more, shouldn't we be looking at them probably, we're on a more citywide basis at all our schools and deciding where the greatest need is. I did, I did talk with our police department, our traffic division. They weren't aware of any accidents, thankfully, um, that have occurred and, and weren't aware of any particular need. I did speak with the PTA, oh, Carol, what, what's the right title, president?
President.
Um, that, that wrote one of the emails. And I suggested to her that she work with our police department, our public works department, submit a request to our traffic safety committee so we could actually look at this in greater detail. I don't think it makes sense to just increase the budget tonight for that purpose. I think it makes sense to look at, is there, um, additional need? And, and like I said, I'd have, I don't think we should react to just one school asking for it. We probably should look at it more holistically if we were to do this. And Don, do you have any history on crossing guards that, I'm sure you have more than I do.
Yeah, half century or so. Uh, the parents are, uh, appropriately approaching the city and not the school district. The safe travel to and from school is, is around public safety. It's a matter for a city's police department, not for the school district to address. So the district, when approached, uh, during the great recession, had the proper response. Now, I live at ground zero around where these requests come. I've been there for forty-four years and, um, know what people are concerned about. I think most of the letters requested five intersections to be covered at the back of the school. Uh, and like Greg says, uh, what about Richmond Street? What about the middle school, et cetera? The, people always want more crossing guards. Uh, so I'm, I'm not sure where this stops. This, probably the requests now totally would exceed the number that we currently employ through all cities. Uh, so it's, uh, it's a emotional thing. And, um, you know, I watch it most every day out in front. Uh, the school district caused a lot of the trouble themselves when they chose to move the childcare program to the back of the school, close to California Street, before it was up near Center Street and connected to the parking lot. By coming to the back of the school, there's no parking lot. So this causes a lot of havoc around California and Palm. We, uh, are trying to work with the traffic safety here in the city to, uh, lengthen the, uh, temporary parking, the green parking space. So, because, uh, another issue is the employees of the school district, specifically the childcare providers, park in places that, uh, make it difficult for the parents to drop their children off. When you come to school and you're connected to the childcare, you have to get out of your car, go up and sign in. The end of the day, sign out. And when the daycare workers, uh, take those places, because there's only really enough green there now for, for one person to be, uh, that needs to be lengthened. That would help the flow in and out of the parents. The parents, uh, and this is not here, it's all over America. I've seen it all my life. They're the biggest advocates for safety, okay? And they're the biggest threats to safety, okay? That's just the way it works around schools. Everybody's in a hurry, and they're special. It doesn't apply to me, and this is how accidents happen. And you been around schools with your kids, you, it's kind of probably ringing true, right? We've all seen it. So I bought the house behind the school so I could walk out of my front door, up the driveway into room eleven. And, um, I was off the grid those days, uh, no gas needed. But this situation here, and these parents may not know this, was a lot worse, um, six or seven years ago when there was no gate across the driveway at California and Palm. And it was really crazy to observe that. You had lots of parents driving up that driveway to drop off and then backing down out into other cars and to the pedestrians, the students, the parents. It was like scary. And, uh, working with the police department here, Ray Garcia in particular, did a fantastic job there to get that fence so that people wouldn't do crazy things like that anymore. That's made it a lot better. If you stand with me in front of my house in the morning, you'll see most of the students are there with their parents. They're walking with their parents from out in the neighborhood to the school. But, uh, we've got a process here to check out whether these, uh, intersections meet the warrants to require a, uh, crossing guard. And the parents who are making these requests should follow the process. Thank you.
So I'm just gonna add, I think, you know, a hundred and three thousand dollars for the safety of our, all of our children going to school is a pretty cheap price. And I would actually request that the, uh, the city manager start looking at the requests from all the school district to see if we do need to enhance it, because we have not reviewed it in a while.
I think it'd be good if we knew what the cost of each additional guard would be, ultimately.
Well, there's, you could just divide that, there's.
Why don't we follow the process, as Dr. Brand suggested? I mean, I think what we're talking about tonight is, are we approving the hundred and three thousand? That doesn't account for any additional crossing guards, right? That's a separate matter. If we want to direct staff to come back and follow the process, do a staff report on whether or not crossing guards are warranted and what it would cost, I think that we should take that matter up separately. So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve item ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh, okay. So does someone make, wanna direct staff or make a motion to direct staff to?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for staff to look at, reach out to the school districts and see if there's any additional cars, crossing guards needed, and we could do a study to determine, and what that, what that would cost.
And please encourage the members of the traffic committee, uh, none of which are in the room right now, um, to listen to the people of the town, because ultimately it's our job to represent the people of this town. And if the people in this town are speaking and feel that there's a safety risk, maybe by traffic standards, they will, the traffic standards will say, no, there is not a risk. And, you know, I, I feel like at some point there, there has to be, we have to listen more than just analyze. So, uh, please just take that into consideration.
Do, Greg, do you have enough, based on what Carol said?
Yes.
Okay, everyone's in favor of that? Okay, thank you. All right, then we have items number, oh, we already approved that. I think we're done, right?
Yes, we are.
Did we approve all the others? Or we did not? No.
We did not. All right, do I, do we have a motion to approve items two, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen?
So moved?
Twenty is just discuss and take other possible actions.
I just have one question. On number fourteen, if we do move forward, that's the lane dominant. I just wanna make sure that there's an out clause if we do move forward with the.
If I remember correctly, there's a thirty-day out clause, is that right?
Just wanna confirm.
Yeah, okay. So did I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh, okay. All right, moving on, reports, city manager.
Just, just for clarification, did you vote separately on the Smoky Hollow item?
We just didn't participate.
It wasn't.
You just didn't, you just reflected that you didn't vote on.
That's right, that's right. The record will reflect that they didn't participate due to financial conflicts of interest.
Got it, okay. Thank you for that. Major effort, Smoky Hollow's been a major effort on the part of staff and a lot of people in the community and, and, uh, planning commission and the council. And, and, uh, tonight's action finalizes that, and we're very pleased with that. So it'll be in effect in thirty days and, and, uh, hopefully it will help us with our vision for Smoky Hollow. The only thing I wanted to mention, and, and I'll ask Randy maybe to come to the next council meeting, ten eighteen, at ten eighteen, is the Great California Shakeout. So this is a great opportunity for all of you to prepare, um, for an earthquake, participate in the drill. Again, that's ten eighteen in the morning on ten eighteen. Um, and to make sure that your, your home and your, your, uh, workplace are prepared for an earthquake. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city clerk's office.
Nothing to report.
Okay, city treasurer is not here. Councilmember Pimentel.
There's four quick things I'd like to bring up, uh, and I don't wanna steal Greg's thunder on, on what an important step, uh, the city, the Smoky Hollow approval is. Uh, that is at least six years of, of his life invested in that. So I don't doubt that champagne will be spilled over that at some point in an undisclosed location. So I think it is worth a, a, a valedictory moment, uh, for the staff on that. Uh, truly, when we talk about big things taking off, that is an effort. Uh, and that was sort of my item three, but since you brought it up, I, I'd make it, make it number one right there. Also, I had an opportunity to go to the Air Force Base. Uh, and one of the things that I think that is wonderful about El Segundo is the way that it grounds itself in its history. And taking a moment for the POW MIA ceremony that General Thompson and Colonel Iggle invited us to, uh, it's something that, you know, traditionally people were prisoners of war and missing in action, has been the provenance of the ground combat element. Uh, it is lately, in the last fifty years, been something that is a burden assumed by the Air Force. Uh, growing up with my father in, in recounting his time over the Republic of Vietnam and North Vietnam, uh, and the number of his friends and colleagues and roommates who would either become prisoners of war or, or killed or missing in action and then come to be found killed. Uh, it was something important to see, and the gravity with which you treated that moment and the way that the community of the South Bay was there and represented, I thought was very invigorating. Uh, and similarly, you know, the way that we celebrate something as simple as the Richmond Street Fair, which is the history and tradition of this town as it relates to those things, I found both, uh, very, I found those things tied together very nicely in the way that we sort of honor our past, uh, and the people who, who are present to it. Uh, and on to that end, I want to make sure everyone's aware this Sunday, uh, we have a young man in town, Drake Walker, who's fighting a very serious medical issue, uh, and the city is coming together to support him with a benefit at Chevron Park. Uh, please come out, play cornhole, enjoy yourself, uh, celebrate him and his family. Uh, it's the wonderful things that we do, and all of those are parts of the same thread that strings us together, so.
Thank you, Councilman Pimentel, Pimentel, well said. Councilmember Nickel.
Couple things, I wanted to congratulate Greg on a very well, um, well-served event for BizNow. That BizNow event we attended last week, uh, you were on the panel. And, uh, I felt that you represented the city quite well. I was in that room and very proud to call myself a council member and, uh, proud to have you as our city manager in that moment. So thank you for that. Uh, we cut the ribbon at the Aquatic Center on Saturday. It was a somewhat of a tag team event for many of us council people who, uh, I saw Chris when I was driving eastbound on Mariposa. He was going westbound. I'm walking in the gate, Drew's walking out the gate. Um, but, uh, it just made me think while I was sitting there, how, how much that Aquatic Center was a team effort for a long, long time and how I think the five of us have done a really good job to work together as a team on many of these events so that our town is represented. Um, the fair on Richmond Street was a huge success, the largest, uh, attendance that we have ever experienced at that fair since, you know, records have been kept. Um, but I wanna thank everyone involved, everyone that came out. It is a great community event. Um, cheerleaders, the El Segundo High School cheerleaders were going up and down the street, doing cheers. It was just, it was awesome. It was everything that El Segundo stands for. Kristin mentioned this, but Lake Subcommittee, we have created, created a tentative timeline. And, uh, we are working on getting some information, talking to some people, and, um, fortunately, unfortunately, planning a trip to Orlando because apparently Orlando has both a drive shack and a Topgolf facility, so both could be seen in the same day. So, uh, at some point, two of us will be heading east and not going to Epcot Center. So that's all I got.
Disney World.
Thank you, Councilmember Nickel. Councilmember Brand.
Saturday was a fantastic day with the ribbon cutting at the Aquatic Center. I thought that, uh, Richard Lundquist did a great job as a master ceremonies. And, uh, that pool is, or pools just spectacular. They're so, so large. We're, uh, very fortunate to have this new asset in our town. And like our mayor said that, um, afternoon, it takes a village. And, uh, it's just taken a lot of people working together to, uh, get that in the ground. And we're all going to enjoy it for a long, long time going forward. And I hope now that we can, uh, once it gets finished, we can turn our attention to the plunge and add that to, uh, uh, our, our water, uh, program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Proton, first up.
Um, just, you know, as Drew alluded to, we met with, uh, Ontario mayor to talk about, um, how we can help in regionalization of the airports. I mean, that's going to be a focus for us to move forward and ensure that, uh, we partner with the Lawa as best we can and ensure that we're getting everything done that we want to get accomplished. You know, it's nice to drive on the new Imperial Highway. And I know that was, um, Suzanne and Drew, you had negotiated that deal. And so I hope everyone's enjoying not getting their, their tires misaligned on the new highway. Um, I did want to let you know that, um, I, Greg and I talked about, you know, uh, I don't know if you read in the newspaper, uh, there was a settlement last, this, last week from, um, someone crossing Doc Wyler at midnight. It was a $5 million settlement for someone getting killed. So I want to ensure that we have the appropriate signs on Imperial Highway that, um, to protect ourselves, that there's no crossing on Imperial. Because I know that currently there's a lot of, I see as I drive down the street, that there's people jaywalking across Imperial Highway. And I just had some concerns that we're ensuring that we're educating everybody that it is dangerous and not supposed to be happening. And that we, we, I would like to direct staff to send a letter to the, um, local companies that operate along that little Imperial to ensure that they're educating their employees that they are not allowed to cross, and it's illegal to cross that street. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Couple of quick things. One, tomorrow's Clean Air Day. So if you have a golf cart or electric car or other way to avoid emissions for tomorrow, encourage you to do so. We had a good meeting with SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, as Carol said. And one of the interesting things is, we know that the biggest, one of the biggest concerns we have is that LAX is forecasted to be at 112 to 114 million annual passengers. I've said this before, that's relative to a theoretical constraint from the past of 78 million annual passengers. What we learned, though, on Friday is that there are many people that are in the same court as us that want regionalization. It's good news that Ontario is now, in the last few years, independent from Lawa. They have a potential capacity of 30 to 31 million annual passengers with some infrastructure improvements. We know that there's plenty of room for growth in San Bernardino and Palmdale. And we also now know who our allies are to encourage that regionalization. So it's one stool of our strategy, which is really asking for regionalization and having some metrics that determine how much of the cargo and freight there goes there, what the plan is for rail eventually. Ontario's already working on a four-phase approach to bring first rubber tire service to the airport and then eventually getting to rail. So I think we're making progress. And it was, we were encouraged that there are other people that are similar stakeholders that want the same thing that we want in terms of regionalization. Finally, Aerospace Corp. had a great meeting there today with the president and the second in charge. That was, um, I learned a lot. I mean, I realized the significance of Aerospace Corp. and their partnership with the, um, Space Missile Command across the street, LA Air Force Base. But I didn't realize the magnitude. They're actually doing a, you know, they're in charge basically for QA, risk mitigation for a lot of the launches. In fact, SpaceX has a launch going up, it's supposed to be Saturday night, it might now be Sunday, Falcon 9. That's an Argentinian satellite that's going up. But Aerospace Corp. is monitoring it because the government, DOD, is going to be a client with payload on the next launch. So fascinating stuff. I learned a ton. I also discussed with Councilman Pimentel, both have prior military experience, that they, you know, they're concerned. The Space Development Agency is real, and they are concerned about the impact to Aerospace Corp., the LA Air Force Base. And most importantly, if you look around Aerospace Corp., there has just been this burgeoning industry of newer aerospace companies. And Millennium Space Systems started here, as best as I can remember. They were just bought by Boeing. You have all these other examples. Well, all that is at risk if we, um, lose a significant part of our business of SMC and Aerospace Corp. So, uh, all the more reason to reengage. I know that former administrations in this city fought really hard to keep that base off the brack. And we need to reengage in that endeavor. So I'll end with that. We go back to closed session at, uh, 9:09, so that's all I have.
Communication.
Oh, sorry, public communications, thank you. Any, seen none? We go back into closed session. We adjourn, thank you.